They are throwing out, it's going to have to include property tax increase, not just guaranteeing with property tax, but an actual increase to cover it. And that could very well throw it into the referendum and...
While we're speaking of referendum, since you brought that up, I know that the school boards in schools never were going to refer it. And they always will use a lease situation to avoid that. And I guess I'm kind of offended by our state legislature on one hand, passing a law that says, you know, this is gonna, anything over a certain amount is gonna go to referendum. And then they backdoor around and say, but if you do this, you don't have to. So they can make a big deal out of the, you know, what we're protecting, you guys, we're protecting us, and taxpayers, but at the same time, we're gonna engineer a way you can do it without. I don't care if it goes to referendum. I never care about referendums. If people wanna vote on it, that's fine, you know? Now, the way I understand it is a referendum, we've never done it, had to go through a referendum. But if it does, they take a certain number of signatures on a petition and all that, then they can get it on the ballot. And it may in fact, that may kill it. But who are we to say if the people of the county don't wanna do it, don't wanna put their taxes in majority on the bill? We're here to represent the people, not to circumvent the people. So if that's the way it works out, that's fine. In other words, I'm not really, we have, I have approached three people to serve on that board, a corporate board, to, in case we wanna go to that way of having a lease hold situation. I don't care if we go to lease or we just own it, I don't care. I certainly do not want to do anything that would imply that the three of us are trying to hide anything from the people, or trying to slip anything over on the people, or trying to get something, money spent that they don't wanna spend. That's not, that's not our position to do that. We're here to represent the people, so...
And the three of us don't wanna spend the money we're spending, but if we don't, it's gonna cost us way more than what it could cost us.
Yeah, good. I don't, I have...
We're responsible for the jail.
Yeah, we're responsible for the jail.
We're responsible.
And, you know, just like we are for the courthouse here. And, so, we have to do, do something. But, Ted, have, did you run that, please?
Yeah, real quick, I love that I freaked out, and this may not be anything new, but I just recently learned of this myself, that the USDA has funding, and I'm supposed to have some additional information provided to me soon. And the funding, it's either a small rate or a low rate loan, if you will, that the USDA can offer, or funding that is available more so geared toward rural communities such as ours, that can provide additional funding to the county for projects such as this. So, I'm doing some more checking into that, and as I receive it, I'll pass it along to anyone that wants to see it, but particularly you gentlemen. But there is funding apparently available through the United States Department of Agriculture.
Well, let me, we need to find out every, every way we can possibly finance this thing that would be the lowest cost to us for financing, and that's, that's good. I appreciate you looking into that for us, because we need those things.
Ted, have you done any more investigation on that lease on the jail?
Well, the...
I guess that's them laws on that.
The ag, I mean, that, that is something that Baker Tilly's looking at. So that's not been ruled out. And we haven't had a meeting with, through Baker Tilly on, on that. And I'm looking for them to get back to us on that. So they were tasked with doing that. And also, Barnes and Thornburg, because it involves bonds, you know? Because that USDA, or that agriculture is, I think it's a forty-year, it spreads out the term. And what they were looking at is trying to do a dual thing, where they would take part of it as long as they could, and to spread out, you know, the term for part of it and part of it for twenty years, which were otherwise limited to twenty years. So, as far as the building corporation, that kind of put on hold, because, you know, the whole thing was on hold. We definitely need, do need the building corporation, it has nothing to do with the referendum.
Has everyone?
No. Has everything to do with, you know, our, our two percent debt limit. And, but it doesn't, that, that doesn't play into the referendum. There is gonna be a petition for, need to be a petition for, to do, to do the bonds. That has to be done. And that's coming up pretty soon, I think, you know? I, I, there hasn't been any kind of a conversation with, with both the bond counsel and the Baker Tilly on the line and commissioner, and a commissioner on the line at the same time. I think that's coming up pretty soon. I would, I, I expect it to be very soon. So, what Ted brought up is accurate, and I think other counties are looking at the same thing, so I, because this is changing the usual way the jails are financed, you know, you gotta satisfy the bond attorney, because he's the one that writes the opinion for the bond holders. And it's his, if that firm, Barnes and Thornburg's been on the line, if something goes, goes south on, on the bond issue, they look, they look to the attorney, which is the bond counsel for, you know, the problem. So they're not gonna, they're not gonna sign off on anything that, that is risky. But, so that's all in, that's all coming. But from, from what I'm hearing, you know, I don't hear any ruling or the view about the, the climate that more jack is there, is given information and did meetings, probably do things, go ahead and do it as soon as you can, you know? And they're, they're be working on the financing department, and, and what it's gonna cost is gonna be, obviously, the, the background. So, you don't have complete information, you don't...
No, we don't.
You, you gotta be somewhat trusting, move forward. But what Steve, Steve's bringing up, here's the rural, eight hundred town rural, I think is that, if, you know, I don't know whether they would be class action, or they're, we don't wanna be in a situation where we, federal law says this, because we lose pretty much all of our authority at that point. And if, if they say you gotta do this, and the council can't say, well, we're not gonna incorporate the money, is, they, they, they become liable too, to council members. The commissioners, we're commissioners, we're responsible for the chair. But, and they, and commissioners will always say, well, the council's got proof of money. Well, the federal court will take care of that situation if we're in danger of that. So we don't wanna be, we don't wanna go down that road. We wanna keep moving forward, and...
I know you told me before that in a federal court proceeding like that, that they ordered all three commissioners and all seven council members to sit right in there in the courtroom.
In care of, it had all, all ten of them were in the courtroom. And the judge, who was, you know, there was no, there were no excuses, you know? This would be, we'd be going south there, we wouldn't be in care of.
But that would also supersede or change the, if the referendum was done, and then people said, well, you know, both, we don't wanna...
Well, there's... Indiana statute, that's it. One of, one of the outs for municipalities, if you wanna call it an out, is everybody has to do it, you know? If, if, if you're paying off the judgment, you know, in a court situation, the municipality doesn't have a choice. They, they, it's, it's just rubber stamping what the federal court, we are for. So that's why the cost just gets out of your control altogether. And I've, I've never heard of a municipality appealing with a spring court, you know, a federal court ruling, I don't, I don't know, I don't think that happens. So, so the forty-year ag, Department of Agriculture loans definitely being looked at, and there will be some kind of petition that'll have to be circulated. And I think it's a, it's a question of, you gotta have so many signatures to get it, to have it here on the bottom, on the part, on part of the bond. Because, and, and, and the building corporation doesn't, doesn't avoid, it just, it, it avoids being, you can't build with a jail anymore without having a building corporation. The schools can't do, build anything without having a building corporation. It's not really the possibility. Indiana, it's because of Indiana's laws.
Okay.
I was wrong. Our constitutional debt limitation, so, so with, no plan to evade anything at all going on here, it's strictly not gonna be afforded.
I think we're ready for CARES Act, and Audrey Beth Meyer.
I have two or three other things also. CARES Act, we need to have our acceptance relief funds, acceptance certificate, certification, excuse me, letter signed by Bill and the audience, if you're willing to do that, so they need this signed. I would also, I've been talking with Mike Venture, who is very involved with this relief fund, with the CARES Act, and there was going to be a phone call last week, but... Ken on vacation.
Yeah, there was, one of those attorneys was gonna handle that, of course.
Right. And they were going to call, and I was, I was on vacation last week, so I asked Mike if he would take care of that, because he's helping to track the claims with my funds corp, and, you know? But we need to know what we can file and what we cannot file, and that's what this lady is helping us with. And he, she thought maybe, or Mike and I thought it might be a good idea to have a contact from the commissioners and one from the council, and he and myself, you, like a committee, to help with this, in case one of us aren't, are not here, that somebody else could help. And since Ted Ratcliffe is my representative off the council, I, I prefer him to be on this committee. And I think Mark Warren was on, is on the ENA board, so we thought maybe he could, he could appoint him, if you guys would like to appoint him.
Is that right of you? Let's take that part right here right now. What do we call this committee? It's the CARES Act Committee? Okay. Would you like to make a motion, Steve, that we appoint Lauren to that committee?
Yeah. Longest option.
You second it? Okay, so I have a motion and a second that Warren be appointed to the CARES Act Committee. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We got that done.
So, I mean, is it okay to have this committee, I guess?
Yeah. Make a motion to have a committee with the people, that's about it.
We made that backwards, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, but then with Lauren already said it.
Yeah. Okay, so we got a motion for a committee. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we have a committee, and we have somebody on the committee, and then, now...
We'll have to sign that.
Do we need to appoint the other people that are on the committee?
Sure, would be great.
Okay, so the other people would be Mike, and you?
Just Ratcliffe.
And Ratcliffe.
And Ratcliffe.
That's a four-person committee, right?
Aye.
No?
It's four.
It'll be four, with the other person from Barnes and Thornburg, is that who it is, or Baker Tilly?
Barnes and Thornburg is the attorney, I told you.
Yeah, and he's already a prosecutor, so hopefully we can start doing our claims, so we have to have that signed before we can do the next one.
Okay. So, would one of you like to make a motion to, who's gonna be on the committee? The sides are...
Is there somebody else?
Just those four, I would say.
Yeah, I made a motion that those four, I thought we did that already.
Well, no, we, we put, we put Lauren on.
Right. We put Lauren on as committee by itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint ENA Director Venture, Audrey Beth Meyer, her representative from council, Tim Ratcliffe, and Lauren's already there.
Yeah. Okay, so adding those three to the committee?
Yes.
Second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we got the committee and everybody on. And then I've got something to decide.
Yes, and then Keith Freeman asked me to, he's wanting to put in the drop box.
Right.
We did not decide who and how that was gonna get paid at the last meeting. Before we do any of that, we need to know that. I talked to Bill just a little bit before the meeting, and pointing that maybe they could transfer something. I know Steve had said that the people that wanted it might need to pay for that, but now there's a couple other departments that would like to use that, so most of it is down the general. So I think commissioners probably can handle that in their budget. And I know that the custodian at act said that maybe they could transfer some money to, at that last meeting, but we can probably transfer it from unemployment down to the drop box.
Okay.
Do you need permission to...
We would need a motion to do that, transfer from unemployment. How much was the drop box? It was a...
A thousand dollars.
A thousand?
We need to do a little bit more than that.
Got a little, a little concrete, a little spacer. Whatever the twelve. You made that motion?
I made a motion. Unemployment, you know, they'll pay for the, pay for the drop box.
I'm gonna second, I'm still against, I still think it's a liability on the county.
That's fair. I'll second it. All in favor of the motion to transfer twelve hundred dollars into the box? Say aye.
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 Go.
Go.
Okay, I'll take that to the council.
Okay.
The next thing is from John Newman, and I put that in your folder. This is on my desk when I got here. Although I have talked to him, and he's, if you remember, right, he wanted to update the tires on the cannon, even he wanted to put something around the cannon. He needs permission, I haven't really, actually...
I had Ted read through this.
Yeah, he wants the authority and the county to pay for any work related to doing the utility locator, eight-one-one locator on it, and...
That's free.
Well, now, or any cost that might be, arise from that. In other words, if there has to be some move, I don't know.
Well, if there's something...
Right there, right there.
Top of the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You have to re, it's, he doesn't wanna be responsible for anything related to any facilities. He wants the council and the commissioners to go there.
I'll see if we can do the eight-one-one, that's, that's...
Well, it doesn't say eight-one-one. It, it's more expensive than that, but, you know, part of it's located in there, and the other part of it is, if you're doing anything special, putting in this extra post, it's all about the space force.
Okay. I, I'm gonna table this until the next meeting, so we can get all three of us to think about this, what this, this is getting deeper than I thought it was gonna get, so...
Since the depth of the holes is twelve fifteen inches, the depth of the holes, my own is twelve fifteen.
Yeah. I would think there'd be...
It should, it might be starting as frost.
I think each of us need to be very careful, disciplined, after everything, and it's very, once the county can be aware, willing to, aware of this, I don't know.
Especially with the hole, the depth of the lava, you know, they're a rituitary... We need to, we need to, each of us look at it.
But now I haven't read this site, so...
Motion to table this, if you're pleased.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
I have the big correction I told you earlier, what APC, there's different number of members on APC, I agree from the one that's not, like, their county's, the commissioners do, will be making appointments.
Oh, the commission will be making appointments to that, now, okay. Well, then...
And it doesn't have to be done until October. And the, the orders, the unified zoning limits has to be amended to change the constituency on APC, to conform to the new statute. So, all that's gonna take time, you're not gonna be doing it right away.
You can let an audience, camera know that? Will you let an audience?
Yeah, I, I, I'd be happy if not, since you asked.
So we need to put a...
Well, we would like, if anybody would be interested in serving on that, while we certainly like to have their name, well...
Would you put an add to the paper for that?
Well, it's not really an add, though, it's, it's just a...
If they would...
If they, if they're sorry to see courtesy of putting that in the paper.
It's not required to advertise.
Okay, so, anything else?
Well, back to this John Newman, is it okay for him to continue on with the tires, though?
I would think the tires would be fine with you.
I mean, I think we've already okayed him to do that.
Right.
Okay. The other thing is, Steve Holland came to me and asked about the copier for the homicides that's over here at the city building. The city does not want to pay copies, you know? So he was asking him, the copier, I mean, the copier is paid for. And I think the prosecutor paid that for the pre-trial, I don't, I don't kinda get it all. But he gave me a quote of thirteen hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents to be the maintenance and the copiers, copiers, copies for a year.
Was that through our contract?
That's what he thought for it to be. He'd like to change it from the city to our contract.
Who owns the copier?
Prosecutor.
Prosecutor.
What if he bought that? A new pro, a new company?
So what we need to do is, ask the prosecutor if we can trade that one in and give one through our contract, would it be cheaper rate? Do you have any of our contracts?
Well, I think, yeah, I was going to ask, though, if that one could be just added, if it's a law fee, a copier, law fee, a copier data to him in the beginning, is what I was told. So, it could be added to ours, ours, but I'm just asking if it can be, you guys agree with that per year, and that's something that we're taking on. I did remind him that we paid for a lot of stuff from Bill's when I first came over here. There were a lot of lines connected when they worked here, and as, county paid all that, and the city did not, and needed, they were told the state police were going to, and they ended there, so...
So maybe we need to sign the bill, the state police report, you know?
Well, we tried, and it's not... So anyway, our, this thing just...
Well, my thing is, is I don't think we need to, we're in a contract with these people, and why are we going out to buy in products we don't need to be buying when we can just be losing it?
That was...
I know that was a totally different situation, and it was a last minute thing we needed.
Yeah, I don't know.
But once it got established, I mean, by now, we should have been underneath our own lease on that, underneath our law fee copier contract. I think it just needs to be underneath our thing, it's, you gotta ask Nick, Nick owns it, or the prosecutor's office owns it.
Well, they're the ones that came over to us, so...
If they're willing to switch it out and get one with ours, and Beau's willing to work a deal with it...
Then we have to lease that copier.
Underneath our contract.
Yeah, it would be more expensive.
More expensive.
I think, I don't know, I could check it, but if you want me to do the checking, then it's fine. We'll decide it at the next meeting.
I'm, I'm in agreement with you.
Okay.
Okay, that's it? Okay. Ron Mainz, Apex, been in for a minute for so long today.
No problem, sir. Let's see here, my name is Ron Mainz, I'm with Apex Benefits, I'm in Naples, lighting up the building, it's beautiful, here. Here to talk to you all, I guess I was requesting you show up in regards to what we're talking about payroll reductions for the employee medical claim for the upcoming year, so I understand you, Beth?
Yes, just options that we have, you know, at the hospital and...
Then maybe we can lower, lower the cost for family?
Yeah, so I, I guess I'm here to provide input, obviously you all have a discussion, make whatever decision you make from an employer standpoint. I can just give you some different perspectives, something to think about as far as your decision-making process. There's a lot of different theories out there, and there's not just one absolute, so that's important, we all understand that. I see it range from employers feeling like they have responsibility to the employee only, and then for the employee to cover their dependents, all the way to the other end of the spectrum, where they look at it in a much more global, um, a global perspective of the entire family being covered. So, having said that, you know, for instance, at my employer, we are basically paying like ninety-five percent for the employee rate, but if I were to find a spouse or kids to cover, it would be all on me. Having said that, that's not the most common. Much more realistic and common approach, especially from the standpoint of what I consider being a civic, civic work environment, where it's a total rewards package, where you're trying to cover both compensation and benefits combined in the total rewards. More common is to see something along the lines of, say, and, and these, these percentages can vary, that if you look at the full premium cost of, like, the employee or employee spouse, employee children, family, we often see it somewhere in a ratio of like an eighty-twenty scenario. For instance, the employer's paying eighty percent for that portion, the employee is paying twenty percent, whether it's just themselves, whether for their children, or spouse, or their family. Now, you all right now are much more in a situation where it's primarily covering the employee, but less than about, I think on average, it varies a little bit, Beth, but I believe it's around thirty-five to forty to forty-five percent of premium for family members. So that's a, that's a pretty heavy hit for your employees to cover the cost of the insurance from that standpoint. And, and to be transparent with you, you know, you all are under the, the cost plus ELAP program, so it's much more involved in the employees that are at, and we, for our clients that have that kind of program, they are more apt to share back the cost savings that program can make with the employees themselves. Whether that's through an improved employee, employer payroll reduction percentage, whether that means a payroll holiday, or two, or three, whether that means an increased health savings account contribution by the employer. But, you know, the employees go through the process, it's worked well for you all, we brought you all a, a reduction in your medical plan this year financially, so, you know, it, it, it makes good sense, it provides buy-in, it's a reward for the employees, for the employer, to try to recognize that and do so as you can. Now, of course, I'm here to say, we never know what's gonna happen from year to year financially. You had a wonderful renewal this year, your rates went down, they're going to, we're a smaller sized organization, where you're covering approximately a hundred employees, it only takes two or three high-cost claims for your, for your expenses to spike back up. So, when you're making this decision on behalf of employees, I think you need to be very clear as to whether you're looking at this as more of a ongoing situation, or you need to take them out at one year at a time, depending upon how the plan's playing, playing out financially, and what the capabilities of the county are in regards to your ability to provide those kinds of monies back to the employee in some fashion.
I know during budget time, you left, you had to go to that meeting. We talked about trying to get the HSA up from fifteen to two thousand.
Okay.
And I would like for family insurance to be cut to a third. We pay like nine hundred and forty-eight dollars for a family.
Yep.
I'd like to just be down there where they can only have to pay about three, three-fifty.
And, and Commissioner, President, you're right, from the standpoint that, really, quite frankly, you don't have very many, if any, family member, family level coverage right now, because it's just too expensive for them.
Correct.
Right? Especially...
And we're losing good employees because they can't afford it.
I agree with that. I don't think there is anything to say against that by any means. Your family premiums that the employees are paying, as far as all four tiers, is the one that's most out of lack. Okay, we're using a little bit of slang here from that standpoint. So, for instance, from the standpoint, we've got this sheet here that kind of shows the payroll reduction percentage, or dollar amounts of what Carroll County has in comparison to our book of business, from that standpoint. You all are doing very well at the employee only rate, okay? From the standpoint that you're actually at or below what most employers charge for the employees, good there. At the employee spouse rate, you're about, on average, about a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty a month more than what we see, okay? At the employee children rate, forty, fifty dollars higher, but for at the family level... At the employee children rate, forty, fifty dollars higher, but for at the family level, as you indicated, what we're used to seeing, for instance, our benchmark for the state of Indiana, for a family on a monthly basis to pay for insurance, is about five hundred to five fifty a month, okay? You all are in excess of nine hundred, so, there is, you know, I don't know why or how, but over the years, you're all's percentages, we're used to seeing a more consistent or a, a more, um, direct way of doing the percentages as far as employee employer payroll contributions, from that standpoint. I think you all have held it fast for a long period of time, and because of that, insurance costs have kind of climbed, and the, the percentages, the mix between them has very broken. So, you know, for instance, you're really good at the employee, but you're quite low at the employer as far as, and we're used to seeing a little, a, a smoother glide path amongst them. I see some employers that do like what you got with a ninety-ten percentage of the employee, and then recognizing that, um, there is additional cost between the members, and maybe you can't afford a ninety-ten ratio, I've seen a lot of folks go for seventy-five, twenty-five, or a sixty, forty ratio across the other tiers. Just depending upon what the employer is able to absorb financially, knowing that you're just accepting more of the cost of the medical plan operation, instead of on the shoulders of the employees themselves. H S A contributions, as you mentioned, you know, I see a lot of employers, what that is a reward, absolutely, and those, um, you know, there's, I think employees kind of expect some consistency on their payroll reduction percentage ratios from year to year, but for H S A contributions, a lot of employers will fluctuate that from year to year, depending upon the performance of the organization. So, there's some play there, but please understand, you as an employer are under no legal requirements that fund at certain levels. I have some employers that, once again, do a hundred zero, a hundred percent for the employee only, nothing else. I have some employers that do not provide any kind of employer health savings account contribution. So, you know, it, it's, it's wide open, but within the public sector, it is more common to see the employers provide a quality benefit package to the employees, especially in regards to the total rewards, knowing that your compensation, your dollar amounts that you can pay on an hourly basis are usually a little lower. Did I answer your questions, providing input to the seat?
So, and, well, I can understand it, is there a way you can put that on paper where, will we pay now, but we could pay on different scenarios? And advise by next meeting?
Yeah, I can get some, what, something, you gotta bring, get it over to Beth?
Because I want it from where it's the worst scenario, so it's awesome for our employees.
Okay, and, and the one thing I...
That's what I'd like to see.
The one thing I can't do for you from that standpoint is, is to know what you all can and cannot afford.
Right.
Right, from that standpoint?
That being the...
Yeah, wor- worst case scenario is, you know, I, I don't know, you could go, you could, you could go deeper from the standpoint that you're not paying for any employee dependence coverage, right? Where, best case scenario is, you go max and provide insurance for free, which is obviously not realistic in this day and age. So, it's, it's really all points in between, from that standpoint, just a matter of, it almost becomes philosophical.
I think our goal for us is, we want to keep our employees, we're losing a lot of employees just because of our health insurance.
I get it, your health plan design is really good, from the standpoint, your deductible is relatively low, two thousand, I use the word relatively, and then, once the deductibles met, your co-insurance, employee, the plans pay a hundred percent, so, a lot of plans I see from a health insurance plan, it's like in, like, two thousand, four thousand, that might be there, but then it's usually an eighty-twenty scenario for the remainder, remainder of the bills up to a certain amount each year. Your employees, once you hit the deductible, they're pretty much done as far as their medical benefits. There's copays for R X, but otherwise, I, I would, quite frankly, in the big scheme of things, rack this back into your medical plan design against others, I would rate it higher, from that standpoint. It's very, the benefit design is very good from that standpoint. But I can try to give you some, I, I could probably rack this back into some examples, things to consider.
On the family, we hardly, hardly say anything.
Right.
It looks like it on paper, but in reality, it's not really much, so...
Do you have some need for a letter, let's ask her a little?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, well, I would like for you to say something, if you could, quickly, about, uh, our community hospital situation.
Community hospital, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, excuse me, I didn't mean to do that.
Caught him off guard, didn't you?
Yeah, caught me off guard, but, oh, in regards to the plan design, we did make a very positive change to the design this year, um, through the cost plus E L A P program. They've added what they call, another piece to it called Imagine Health. And what that does is, this company goes out to various, the different states where the, the cost plus E L A P program operates, and then they source a specific healthcare system to negotiate where, instead of, um, no val, instead of balanced billing, where someone can be balanced bill for healthcare costs at a hospital, what they've done is they've gone out and made arrangements, and in Indiana, this organization has established a contracted community health system, a community health system, which, of course, there is one in Kokomo, and all the providers as well, so not just the hospital, but all the physicians that are employed by the community in Kokomo and, and around the entire, um, belt of Indianapolis. If any of your plan members go there for medical services, Carroll County has agreed to pay a slightly higher rate for their services there, but in doing so, the community hospital will not balance bill your plan members for any services. So, it's, um, you know, the hos, the, the county took a step in the right direction of relieving some of the employees' concerns of balanced billing by simply going to a community hospital or a community provider, there isn't a balanced billing, still responsible for their deductible, obviously, but nothing above and beyond that, from that standpoint. Sorry, David, I noticed what you was asking.
Question, right? That's what I wanted to say.
Yes.
So, we do have a hospital now?
Absolutely, you have, you have several hospitals, you have Kokomo, and if you need a higher level of tertiary care, um, all the community hospitals in Indianapolis are.
Which are, how many, how many?
I believe there's, I think there's five of them, so, and, and that does include all their outpatient clinics, as well as their physicians. It's the entire community healthcare system, not just hospitals, but system.
Yes.
So, with the community, um, so, I'm, need to get a man, I have to say.
Okay.
So, you know, every time I go to St. Louis, or St. Francis, or we call Francis, can help?
Yeah.
Francis can help, I end up with a balanced bill.
Yeah, so if you...
So, I go to Kokomo, no balanced bill?
No balanced bill. Anything and everything?
I need an emergency room for something, go to Kokomo, no balanced bill?
If, if, if you can get there safely in that period of time, yes, yes, that's the beauty of the, you know, the health...
But that's the closest one in this area, Kokomo?
Yes, Kokomo, yes, yes.
That's...
But then, of course, you got them right on the very north end of, of four sixty-five belt, too. So, they're, they're right off of, I believe there's one right off of thirty-one on the north end of town.
There is, I just passed it yesterday. What's that? What's that?
I'm sorry?
What hospital is that?
It's still part of the community health system, they have a hospital off of thirty-one on the north side of the four sixty-five route, you can go to any of them, for instance.
Where can we get a, like, a list of?
I believe I, um, provided a brochure on that, um, I think I sent that out to you, emailed that to you, um, following me. If you don't, let me know, I'll get it back out to you.
So, we'll send it out.
I sent it out to you in successfully, I believe.
That would be great to share.
Yeah, no, absolutely, it would be great to share.
And then, I have another question, on the, you, after you hit the two thousand dollar deductible, and then basically, like you said, after that, the self-insurance program is covering...
The county's paying for the remainder of your services?
For everything.
Yes, ma'am, less your prescription drugs.
Was that intentional? Or how much, how much, uh, more is that costing in premiums? Than if you say raise the out-of-pocket to six, five or six thousand more?
Okay, I, I get what you're saying from that standpoint, you know, am I close enough to the microphone, if y'all still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I think it was intentional, it predates me, okay, I'll say that, to be transparent, but it makes sense from the standpoint that you all are under that, have that cost plus E L A P program, so the idea is that the county is able to save money under that program, that's another way for the county to pass on those savings to the employee by having, not having to have a co-insurance law.
Okay, so, do they, does the E L A P, cost plus E L A P balanced bill, go hand in hand with that?
They can, they, they do always, it's, it's...
I'm just trying to figure out if, if, if that, um, out-of-pocket was higher threshold, say five or six thousand, if that would save them premiums?
If.
Because I know the opinion that, once you hit your deductible, and then the employee or the covered staff member has no, they don't, they don't have any skin on the game.
I get it, I get it.
Whereas, you know, so, maybe their, their expenses are, you know, the, well, I've got this or that, I'm gonna go take care of this and all, you know what I'm saying? If you're, if you have no...
Maybe go more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if, it's not gonna cost me anything to go get this healthcare, then I'm not gonna be as conservative about it as if I had to pay twenty percent.
I, I would, I would say, under normal circumstances, you're absolutely correct for thinking it's right on the money, literally and physical, uh, literally, from that standpoint. But, you all are running exceptionally well financially on the plan, from the standpoint that we were able to deliver to the commissioners, an overall decrease in your medical plan costs over the coming year. So, if there is a decrease, if, if, if the plan is holding, and in some cases, bringing down medical costs, which in itself is an anomaly, right? I don't see the reason why they would want to put a more of a burden on you all's backs by increasing the amount of money you gotta pay for the services that you receive.
Well, the, and saying it would be just like I said, it's going to make people more conservative than...
Yeah, I think it's, I don't, I don't, I think it's more of the, uh, pull of the right levers on the payroll contributions, more so than it is the cost of the ins... The insurance cost, the cost of the plan is absolutely under control. I think it's a matter of pulling the levers for you as employees to be benefited while the county, obviously, the commissioners are being financially, um, astute with the monies that you have.
And I would like to echo what Steve said, the, the premiums that are, uh, basically the employee is responsible for almost all of the premiums, if they wanna cover their children or their, their families, or even their spouse, which is, you know, really a high. The premiums are pretty high compared to Indiana benchmark, you know, situations, and if you look at the salaries of our staff members, you know, their, our salaries are pretty conservative. And so, not only are we losing employees because they hit twenty-six or whatever age, and they can no longer be on their parents' insurance, and they have to, or they're gonna get married, they're gonna start a family, they can't afford the premiums, not only are we losing employees because they can't afford this health insurance, but we can't attract, you know, employees, when they look at their, their, uh, starting wages, and then they look at the premiums that are gonna be deducted to cover their spouse or their children or their family, then they're gonna like, they're gonna pass, they're gonna have to go memorial, so... And, and when you look at the savings, uh, you have the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for all these expenses, and for the last three years, you know, we haven't even come close to spending all that, to put that back in the, in lowering the premiums would be really wonderful. And if you have a good year, if you have a good year, then you can maybe make the H, H S A contributions go up or down, like your, you know, improve the premiums.
The one thing I will say, as you improve the payroll reductions, that's also one to bring on more individuals to the plan. The more individuals you bring onto the plan, eventually, it's gonna cost more, obviously, right? There's a, there's a cost per individual member, overall, because you know they're gonna use services at some level. But, once again, arranging your payroll reductions to make it a more affordable plan as far as your retention and improvement, makes a whole lot sense.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
And with that, we are fifteen minutes over on our next meeting, which is our, uh, um, drain's board meeting, so, uh, I would ask for a...
You can do the jury?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned for the commissioner meeting, and we will begin the drain's board meeting shortly possible.